Good evening, I'm Mayor Javier Figueroa and I'm calling this regular meeting of the University Place City Council for Monday, November the 17th, 2025 to order. And I'll start with a roll call. A city clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Boykin?
I'm here.
Councilmember McCluskey?
I'm here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Grassi?
Here.
Mayor Protemwood?
Present.
Mayor Figueroa?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And will Councilmember Boykin lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pleasure, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, if you join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Boykin.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we'll go with the approval of agenda. I'm calling for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Is there any objection to approving the agenda? Here are none, the agenda is approved. And we'll move on to item number five, public comments. And we're here now in the public portion of the agenda. And this gives an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments to the city council about any items not appearing on the agenda or on the consent agenda. And we'll start, before we start with those that are here, I'm going to ask, is there anybody online?
I don't see anyone online, Mayor.
Okay, we'll start, I do have a sign up sheet and I'll start with that. And then after that, I'll ask for anybody else that didn't sign up if they would like to speak as well. So at this point, those that have signed up are invited to come up. You have three minutes to speak on any subject not scheduled for public comment further down on the agenda. And please state your name and your residency at UP or what town. And then you have three minutes, which the city clerk will clock. There is a seat up here with the city manager, point which one? Right there. Is the mic on?
Mic is on.
And please put the mic close to you, speak up to the mic so we can hear you. You've been recorded and it's easier to listen to your comments later on if we can hear you clearly. So with that, I'd like to ask Eric Aravena to come up. Eric?
All right. My name is Eric Aravena. I am the president of University Place Soccer Club. We're an organization that provides almost 700 kids a place to play recreational soccer within their hometown of University Place. When Parks and Rec was defunded in University Place, UPSC was the only organization that took initiative to provide a recreational program for the children in this community. Even when operating out of deficit some years, UPSC has always put the kids first and provided a place for classmates, friends, and neighbors to learn a sport and have fun together, something the city was no longer willing to do. If the city now has decided they want to support recreational sports for kids, they need a partner with the club that has been doing this work with the kids in the community for almost 30 years. The two programs cannot exist together. So what you're proposing is for UPSC to cease to operate and encourage our community of players and families to play for a YMCA that's not even within city limits. It's been hard to wrap my head around why? Why such an effort to support a Tacoma-based business? Why is the city all of a sudden interested in supporting youth athletics when we have been asking for support for so many years? And why was the largest, most recognizable, and longest-standing youth sports organization in University Place not respected enough to warrant a single conversation before the city agreed that we were no longer necessary? I urge you to reconsider this proposal and leave soccer off of it. Soccer for kids in this city is well established through this club, and dismantling the club will have significant impacts on the youth in our community. I urge you to support the club that is already a part of this community. I urge you to put the kids first, like we have done for so many years. Thank you.
Okay. Elizabeth Tasic?
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Tasic and I'm the proud mom of a U9 player and a U13 player for the Blue Dragons and the Blue Flames. I wanted to let you know just how important the UPSC club is. My kids have not grown, I didn't grow up playing soccer. My kids showed a little bit of interest and they went to the YMCA and we had a horrible experience, an absolutely terrible experience both as kids and as parents. There wasn't enough support for the teams, there were often not enough coaches to go around forcing parents to just show up and try to coach. The games were disorganized, if at all that they happened, and the kids learned nothing about the sport. We moved over to UPSC and have had a phenomenal experience, absolutely bar none for a rec league, it is mind-blowing. My daughter has excelled both in the sport and her confidence has gone sky-high. The Blue Dragons have been three-time state champions of the rec club and they have had players move on to the premier league and into select league. My son just moved to the level where you have a goalie and has been doing phenomenal in defending. He actually knows where his lanes are and they're doing plays. You never see that in any other clubs at their age. To not support UPSC in my mind is mind-blowing. I learned about this this morning and we showed up tonight even though my daughter is practicing right now at circ. This is critical that you support this club and not try to bring in something new that is haphazard and has demonstrated to be poor performing. Thank you.
Before I move on to the next person, please state your name and the city you live in, please. And just for clarification, so if you don't know, during a public meeting, comments, we don't engage with conversation, we just listen. And then what happens is that the council and staff put together the comments and listen to them and figure out, okay, what is the next step with all the comments and so forth? And you will hear from someone and we won't be silent, but you will hear what the next step is and how we proceed. So just want to let you know about how that works. So with that, James Weber.
All right, good evening. My name is James Weber. I am a UP resident. I live off of 68th Avenue, Court West, just a mile or so away. I completed my second year as a coach in UP Soccer Club and had a great experience. We also participate, my family, I have two kids, a seven-year-old boy and a four-year-old or a five-year-old girl, we participate in T-ball at Fur Crest. But coming back to soccer, we've really enjoyed our experience and I'm not on top of the whole proposal, I'll share that, but I hope to learn more. What I do want to do though is throw my support behind the current organization, it's worked well. I've enjoyed being a participant as a coach and father and my son has done well in the league as well. And then to just pick out one concern without seeing again the whole proposal, it's just a fragmentation of having a competing or another option. I think that how we work well, how we work with the other cities right now works well, how we've been able to schedule all the games and have all the kids play together. And I'm worried that if we have another organization, it's just going to fragment the teams and the children and also provide less resources for the established organizations. Thank you.
Shane Masco?
Councilmembers, thank you for listening to us tonight, appreciate you having us here. I am Shane Masco, I'm a longtime University Place resident, I've also been an employee here as well. I grew up playing youth sports in this area, both here and for the YMCA, so I've seen both sides of those. I currently coach three different sports throughout the year. UP Soccer Club is the best organization that I coach for. I also coach for baseball and basketball in different areas because we don't have youth sports here. So I do appreciate you looking into bringing youth sports back here, but as a part of that, we need to keep UP Soccer Club. You have to get behind this club and support us, they've been here for so long and the kids do so well here. I currently coach U11 boys. Every year I get new kids, some move on to select teams in UP or in the area, I coach a rec team. So I get new kids every year, which is great because I get the opportunity to teach more kids how to play the game of soccer. A lot of them come from the YMCA. I get complaints every year from parents on how poorly it's run, how bad the coaching is. They come and they play for us, they learn so much. All of their teammates are kids in this school district. All the kids on my team currently go to, with the exception of one, they all go to Drum, Narrows View, or Chambers. They're all friends in this community and you can see by the audience today how much we care about this organization. So I just urge you, when you are looking at this, to please consider keeping us for soccer. I have a lot more to say on the other sports, but tonight I'm here for the UP Soccer Club, so please keep us in your thoughts and affairs.
Adam Pollack?
Thank you, my name is Adam Pollack. I'm a UP resident. I'm also the game scheduler for our club, so I have a lot of involvement and I coach as well, a girls' U10 team that I've been coaching for about five years now. I just found out about this this morning and I guess my first thought was, what is the benefit to our residents, our UP residents in switching and supporting soccer through the YMCA? I could echo a lot of what everyone else has said, I just wanted to bring up a couple points for consideration. The UP Soccer Club is run, our coaches and everyone are volunteers from UP, they're residents here. The YMCA would not be the same, you would not get the same UP residents, right? YMCA is not even within the city. The other benefit to the UP Soccer Club- The other benefit to the UP Soccer Club, when you ask, you know, why our club, right? We have developed over the last 20-some years the relationships with the Furcrest Soccer Club, the Lakewood Soccer Club, Norpoint, Gig Harbor. So we have those relationships in place, the relationships with the Pierce County Youth Soccer Association, with the referee associations. So those are already in place, and just a little support, there's no reason to go outside. As far as maybe the question comes up, why can't we coexist? As you know, there's a huge shortage of open space, of fields for youth sports. I fear that our club will take a backseat. We're already behind the schools, lacrosse clubs, things like that. We're already trying to fight for space, and I feel like if the city partners with the YMCA, we're going to lose any chance of getting those open spaces. Sorry, my phone blinked out. Just so you know, kind of our numbers, I know Eric had mentioned some of our numbers. This fall, we had 23 teams in the U-10 to high school age range and 16 teams in the U-7, U-8 range. So we serve a huge amount of kids in this community, and I think we'd be doing them a disservice to essentially outsource that to somewhere outside the city. So I urge you to reconsider. If the decision's already been made to support the Y, I urge you to reconsider. If it hasn't been made, I really urge you to back the UP Soccer Club. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Nellis. I live at 5506 Bristonwood Drive, Weston University Place for the last 35 years. I'm here first to apologize because I lost my temper with you when I found out the criminals in University Place have more rights than we do. I'm in a better space mentally. What I'm going to ask you guys, and I realize you can't answer it now because I think I've talked to every one of you when I was having a little breakdown over my next-door neighbor. His yard is now worse than it was two months ago. I'm asking the city, what have you done to make me safe? He's on house arrest, and I believe, and I'm going to go to the courts to find out how and why, and he's now locked up with the woman he abuses where we've had the SWAT team. I'm only angry because I loved University Place. I fought to live here, I volunteered, I've joined Chambers Bay Women's Club, I've donated to the kids. When I was an employee of the VA, I supported our veterans after work, weekends. I am not a mean person, but the lack of my city to do this to me and take me to a place where I don't feel I'm being listened to, and I know you know that, Mr. Mayor, because you and I had the conversation. My daughter died, and I couldn't even be in my home. That is not right. I paid my dues, I paid my, I paid my homeowners, everything, seven years. I have emails, and I really apologize for yelling at kids because I really don't want to yell. I have sent emails to the code enforcement, Melanie, who is worthless. I have seven years of complaints, drive by my house and see what he's got going on today. I'm contacting, because I've had to move home now because I'm going to sell my home and get out of University Place. He's got a street bus next to my fence. You've given him more rights than me, and you can't do anything for me, yet I've complained for seven years, and I have the documentation, and it's only gotten worse. I have rat traps that are 80 to 100%. My next move tomorrow is calling the health department because I've got to worry about me and my husband and my dog. I just don't understand how you protect the criminals. I've had the SWAT team shooting beanbags into his house while he chased his girlfriend down the street naked. I mean, how does he have more rights than me? I wanted to stay here. I put $100,000 into my home to retire there, and yet you guys are not protecting me. Tell me what I have to do.
Okay, so my last one on the list is Dan, and I'm going to try my best for the last name, and that is Nova Gruski. You got to tell me how close I came. How did I do with your last name, Dan?
Oh, I just, I just give people grace. You get close, I'm happy. Nova Gruski.
Oh, I did, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty phonetic.
All right.
Hello. My name is Dan Nova Gruski, and I am a University Place resident. I am talking about 5502 property owned by Gerald Lucas. It's certainly affected his neighbors for years. A lot of years ago, on a very good day, I might have been able to throw a baseball from his front yard to the K through four primary school, Chambers, so affects hundreds of other families. Deborah mentioned it, SWAT team forced entry, very much a drug center, refuse, automotive, junkyard, it's just filth. He's turned his residential property into a giant, open, vermin-attracting, it's just filth. It would be unacceptable for any of you to have a neighbor in that state. None of you would accept it, none of you would want it. I wouldn't want anyone to have to live that way. We've had people who gave up and run away, we have people who are too afraid. In my own personal experience, he's definitely come out into the street and yelled at me, and I just try to be very patient because I try not to put a hand on anybody. He's threatened me, he does his little Nazi cosplay and rides with his little helmet and his skull mask and follows me on his motorcycle. I don't like it, especially when the kids are in the car, but I keep my hands to myself. And this has been going on for years. We don't expect you to have a magic wand to fix the problem, but after so many years, we would have expected him to have been successfully cited for any of this, and it's just never been done. Melanie has said that she doesn't want to go to the property, she's afraid to go to the property, but then I talk to people in the police office, police department, and they say no one's ever made the request for, they'll go with her. An officer would be happy to go with her. Ask, they're not even being asked. We would like, we don't want you to do what you can't do, but do what you can. Do the citations, the write-ups, the violations are there. All we can do in the HOA is charge them money. And he has a guardian angel, a family member who bails him out for closure after foreclosure after foreclosure. All we can do is money, we can't do anything else. You can cite him for violations, and when he doesn't change, the refuse pile at this place, a stone's throw away from a primary school, is become, maybe we can do something more than just a fine that gets paid and a problem that continues. We're trying to set up more meetings with the city, with different departments, we'll have to bring, we were told, it's like we're facing barriers. In order to get a meeting with the police department and the city attorney and the code enforcement, because we're always suing him for something or other, we'll have to bring our attorney, and that's additional expense, fine, we'll do it. We'll try to do it, but it shouldn't be so hard. It shouldn't require Deborah to go through years of that. I heard a buzzer, if that means my time's over, I'll stop, but it shouldn't be that hard. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
That was the last person on this list. However, as I said earlier, anyone that is present here that would like to come up and provide public comment on any subject other than on the agenda, please go ahead and come forward. Okay, come on and provide your name and the city you live in.
Good evening, my name is Julian Herrera, I live here in University Place. Came to announce, I'm a pastor of New Hope Church, and we are planting a brand-new campus here in University Place. We are going to be moving into the space that's at 28th and Bridgeport where Neighborhood Church has existed. Neighborhood Church has been a staple of the city for well over five decades. We've been honored to be walking with Pastor Fred Fay, who's been the lead pastor there for 15 years, and for the last year and a half, we prayerfully walked together, and he and his team have decided to retire. We've merged our church, and so we will be planting New Hope Church in that location there at 28th and Bridgeport, so very excited about that. And you'll begin to see some signage change and all that wonderful stuff, and we'll be having Christmas gatherings in December, and our official launch date will be January 11th of 2026. And wanted to let you all know and the city know that New Hope Church, their brand-new campus in University Place will be here. So thank you very much for allowing me to come, appreciate you very much. God bless.
Thank you. Anyone present that would like to come up? Please come up. You know the drill, right? Okay.
Michael Webb, 5022 58th Avenue Court West, University Place, here and speaking in support of UP Soccer Club. Just to piggyback on what everybody else has said, I think the ask of our city government is to strike soccer from listed sports in agreement with YMCA. This is a good opportunity for you, the city council, to see the amount of commitment that not just the staff and the successive presidents have put into the UP Soccer Club, but also on short notice, the families and kids of UP Soccer Club. It's an opportunity to get to strike soccer from the listed sports in agreement with YMCA, but also for you to recognize the spirit and commitment and make the UP Soccer Club one of the jewels of University Place in both investment and protection. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. My name's Brian Sleva. I've been a UP resident since 2010. I grew up in East Tacoma, so this was the place for me to be because of the school district, and I take a lot of pride in this city, and especially for the UPSC and for what it's done for my family, for my daughter, who's nine years old, who plays on the Blue Champions, and we love them so much, and the family that the community in a whole has is everything. And I found out this morning in an email that the YMCA was getting involved, and right away it's like, well, partnership, and I personally would just like to see the details of why this has even come up, because to me, it's, you've had something that's 20 years strong, it's not broken, what are we trying to fix? So my concern is, is what's, where do we go with the YMCA? So I would encourage that everybody on the council and the city stands behind UPSC. Thank you.
Okay. Please do not be bashful, this is super important, that's why you're here, and certainly for our council, I can speak in behalf of all of them, we are open ears to listening to every one of you.
Tricia Diom, University Place. I wanted to speak also on behalf of the University Place Soccer Club. One, while I appreciate the city bringing back youth sports, which we do need youth sports in University Place, there are other youth sports that we need, and soccer is not one of them. My biggest concern is with the YMCA proposal is if it ends at 12, what happens to all the teenagers? University Place Soccer Club has many teenager teams, U-13 and above, that go all the way up to high school playing, and those kids will have nowhere to play. They'll either have to go to Tacoma, they'll have to go over to NorTAC, Furcrest maybe, but we really want to keep supporting those older kids as well, especially as they go into high school and junior high. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, there she is. Thank you.
My name is Denise Rodell, I live...
Ma'am, could you speak into the mic? We can't hear you up here.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Denise Rodell, and I live by the current Apple orchard. My husband's military, we moved here right before COVID. University Place Soccer Club basically like was the cement for my kids to be part of this community, and I'm going to be super emotional, but it matters. And of course, like, the YMCA is wonderful, right? Like, no one is dissing the YMCA, like, we appreciate their place in our community in the US, all of that, they do wonderful things. But again, we fight for field space. I have twins who are 16 and a daughter who is 11, and they have all played for University Place Soccer Club. And we have like family, such good family friends, such good teammates, that we've been together for years and years. And I worry again that the location issues, we are always running out of space, always running out of lit fields, and just bringing in the YMCA into this picture when we have a phenomenal program. That is super affordable. I have lived in many states, my husband's military, we've been all over, I've played rec, like, ASO, Hawaii, California, Georgia, and University Place Soccer Club is an amazing recreational program that is absolutely affordable to our community, and there's just not space for other. Again, we want youth sports, super cool that you guys are thinking about adding more youth sports, but again, we are an established program, and we do not have the space. Like, I see it all the time with my kids, moving locations, this and that, the sun goes down in the fall here, right? And like, we're all fighting for space to be part of this amazing club, so please, please consider supporting UPSC.
Anyone else here? Okay, come on up.
Good evening, Todd Park. I actually coached Denise's daughter, so timing seems fitting for me. So I'm, what, 10 years into coaching now, and my oldest group of kids are now moving into select, all of them, most of them played at Curtis, or all of them made their high school teams this year, and that was development that started at age four. So when I think about what you guys do for the community, I think about sort of fiscal responsibility and community involvement, and really you've got the foundation set up. So from a government standpoint, in being most responsible with taxpayer dollars, the system's built for you. So for me, where you put that money is in the field availability, lights, taking care of things, there's mole holes in school fields, so that partnership to me is where you invest the money, and not in another partnership that's going to cost X amount of dollars to get off the ground and might not even work potentially. So, yeah, I'm in full support of it. I have a five-year-old who's now starting, three daughters, and crazily, I coach all three of them. And, I mean, it's huge from the financial side and just the community involvement side, to see the parents step up, fathers, mothers, aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters. I mean, to have this foundation already set up, it doesn't seem like you really need to go anywhere but put those dollars in support of an organization that's already founded for 40 years, I think Jody told me, not 20 years. So, yeah, thank you for your time.
I see somebody standing up and coming, are you coming this direction? Yes, you. Okay, welcome. Your name and city.
Hi, Kristy Arvina, University Place. I just wanted, I'm obviously here to support University Place Soccer Club, and just note that the club has been around a long time. and just note that the club has been around a long time. We've, our kids have been in this club, started in this club in 2000, so at least then and beyond. And, you know, my son spoke earlier. He's the president currently. And I just want to say that for me, when I heard about this just recently, I'm a public servant. I served, worked for the state of Washington for over 30 years. Transparency is very important, as I'm sure it is for all of you. And for everybody in this room that's here to support UP Soccer Club to have learned about this this morning is somewhat shameful to me for the city. This should have been a conversation that city government, whoever's making these decisions or even considering a move like this, would have reached out to the club that has been committed to these children for more than 30 years and asked about what are the impacts to these kids? What is the impacts to the club? What have you done as a club? What, you know, what does the club do? What does the club serve? I don't know if you know or not, but some of the parents here tonight have spoke, the impacts for their families. These children, if this club does not continue, it sounds like maybe as early as next year, these teammates that have played together for many years, they're going to be broken up. That's an unintended impact that you may not have considered. They're not going to be able to go to another place, the YMCA or whatever the situation is, and stay together like they are currently. These friends, these family members, these, like I said, their school classmates, they're not going to stay together, and they're going to be heartbroken. This club is about the children. And that is what I want really to sort of make the impact here is that these kids are going to be impacted by the decision you make coming out of these public comments tonight. And I don't know, you know, if there's been contracts signed. I mean, nobody knows. And that, to me, is the real problem here. For a city government to have this lack of transparency or what appears to be a lack of transparency is bothersome to somebody who has been a part of this community for over 25 years. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Zook. I'm associated with the club as well.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry. I'm sorry. My name is Shannon Zook. I'm associated with the club as well. Been coaching with it for a number of years. And, yeah, this is a little last minute, but I want to bring up a couple of points. One is that our, we have a bedroom community.
Excuse me, just a little quick. Did you state your name? I don't remember.
Yeah, Shannon Zook, Z-O-O-K.
Okay, thank you very much.
This is a bedroom community that's largely built around the sports and the high school here. A lot of us have moved into this area to be part of this community, which we value and hold in high esteem. Our school sports in the Curtis area are very good, and especially our soccer programs. Most notably, the girls took third and stayed at the 4A level last year. A lot of those kids came up through this club and were trained in this club and were, the high school was given highly-trained athletes that grew and developed within this club. Some went beyond it, but a lot of them had their roots and their core, and some through their entirety of their soccer career through this club. And the school, it reaps the benefits of it. And we're not trying to say, look at what we did for you, but more so, there's a partnership that exists there. And it's a huge community. We serve a ton of kids in this community. We serve a ton of families in this community. And so, we're a really good supporting structure to this community. Now, I don't know quite your exit intent. We're working with the YMCA. I'm assuming it's, I assume you guys are all well-intended and looking for the betterment of the community and the city, and that's great. And I think that's awesome. And there could be some really good benefits from that partnership. I do think this club services so many families and so many kids, and it's a big, a big, big part of building up this community, that it deserves a place at the table of discussion. So, I think that there should be some representation of this club going forth from here to work in coordination with the council, with the city, and what that partnership with potentially the YMCA looks like to make sure that the needs of the club, which meets a lot of the needs of your citizenry, are met in conjunction with the needs of the city and the needs of the other sports in lieu of our lack of a partial rec department. And we all understand that. We all see that's a big need. We all want to have that in this community. It should be, it should be in this community. But you have a really well-established, well-functioning, with aspirations to be better functioning. We could grow as a club. We could grow as far as our level of competition. We have all the athletes here. Some of them are going outside of here. We want to bring those kids back in and grow that. But if, and it's been said earlier, we're competing for field time. We don't have a lot of fields here. We definitely don't have lights. I, Todd, myself, and a lot of the coaches are victim right now clamoring on circ and sharing spaces that we, you know, we can't even scrimmage. I want to scrimmage Todd's team. You know, can't even scrimmage. We don't have full goals over there. But we really want to kind of grow on that, stuff like that. But we have to work in partnership with you guys. There's a lack of field availability. If that became a bigger issue with the YMCA, it's going to be a bigger issue for us. We have limited resources as far as that kind of stuff's concerned. So, I think that conversation needs to be, we need to be at the, we have a seat at the table with you guys in figuring that out. I think it would be like a missing part of your guys' decision-making process if we did not have a seat at the table. So, thank you for your time, guys. Hope you can make this.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Roberge. I'm a University Place resident. And so, almost my entire family is a part of the University Place Soccer District. It's like, my uncle, he's a coach. My brother, my cousins, they all play soccer. And if we lost, you know, soccer, they'd be heartbroken. It's like, they have so many friends, and we've made this community and this family, and it collapsed. And, I mean, who wants to lose their friends in this fun sport that they get to play, like, every week? It's, it's a great, it's a great community, and we all support each other. And it's, it's just, yeah.
Thank you. Young man, your name and what city you live in?
Hello, my name is Junice McLean, and I live in UP. I forgot what it's called.
That's okay.
I've played soccer since I was four, and it's just a joy to my heart. And I would just be heartbroken if it quit. So, like, I know you have to make your decision and stuff, but please keep it open.
Anyone else? Take a pause, and because most, sometimes I've been in your seat, and sometimes you wonder if you should stand up and speak. And please, this council is more, is so welcome to anybody speaking, especially when it's important to you. So far, it's been well-spoken about your concerns and issues, even the little ones. Very much appreciate it. And one thing is, before I make the last call, is Steve, our city manager, will you have somebody make sure that we have the ability to have everybody's email or some way to contact them so we can follow up, or at least the club? I just want to make sure before you leave, we have a way to connect with every one of you, even through the club or somehow, so that we can respond to you later on about our councils moving forward. So, with that, I'll make the last call. Anybody would like to speak? Oh, I knew it. Welcome. I recognize you.
I think I played for your basketball team when I was a child.
Yes. I won't say your nickname, though.
My name is Stephanie Bolt, and I am a UP resident. I am the vice president of the University Place Soccer Club, and I emailed all of you directly to talk about this unfortunate situation. I think that, I'm not going to sit here and tell everybody, like, talk about what everybody's already talked about, because I think they've all spoken very well. What I want to do is thank you guys for listening to us. Thank you, everyone behind me who came out last minute to support us in this cause. And I want to hope, I hope, that we can all connect and we can have a seat at this table. This club is important, not just to all of the children and the parents behind us, but to this community and to other communities other than ours, such as Furcrest and Lakewood. So, thank you for listening, and I look forward to hearing from you guys.
Thank you. Another deep breath and see if anybody wants to come up. Anyone? Yes, sir, come.
I am Cameron Espy, and I am a university soccer player. And I would like really to keep this club and keep all my friends, because I love soccer and it's my favorite sport. And I just want to keep it really, because it's very important to me.
I have somebody from the back. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Tanya Alvarez, UP resident, Junice's mom. Somebody brought up something that struck me, is let's keep our club...
Can you speak up to the mic, please?
Let's keep our club and let's move those funds to fixing up the surrounding areas where we practice, where we play, lights, fields, and use your funds that way. I like that idea a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, now go ahead and come up here. Just pick up to the mic, your name and city.
Yes, sir. My name is Ryan Johnson. I live in University Place.
A little bit closer, please.
My name is Ryan Johnson. I live in University Place. I have three young children under 10. Two of them play at the soccer club, and one of them will. The biggest thing that comes to my mind is I'm a recovering helicopter parent, if anybody knows what that is. It's about safety, and I've never felt not safe trusting with the family members of, because all the coaches are family members, either with somebody on the team or has been with youth programs with the club for a long time. And I've never had to worry at all with regards to their genuine effort and, you know, desire to help kids. And I have no idea who will be the coaches from this other entity. My only experience with that club was with flag football. And it was, it was not as family-friendly as the soccer, and I just don't want the soccer to be interfered with. It's the happiest place for the parents. I think that's one of the biggest things that, for me, as a, sometimes, like I said, recovering helicopter parent, it's anxious to know who's actually going to be helping or teaching your children. And all of the coaches that we've experienced are either parents of the kids on the school, on the team, I mean, or they're, have experience with this program. And it's just so, so safety, so safely confident in just dropping the kids off. Not to worry about who they are and what their ulterior motives are. They're all part of the family. They're all already stitched in to University Place. And so, I think that having to question whether or not they should get the fields versus a new entity or not shouldn't be a question, shouldn't be an issue. So, I just really, really hope that University Place, you know, does their due diligence and understands and researches how well-run this volunteer soccer club is. And I don't, I don't imagine it going anywhere. And so, I just want to say thank you for listening, to all of us. I hope y'all have a wonderful evening, and don't let me be the last one. But thank, but thank you.
Let's pause for one second. Okay, who's next? Oh. Come on up. Speak up to the mic, please.
Hi. I'm Hadley Snow, and this is my brother.
Granny Soap.
And I will be speaking on behalf of him, basically. So, he plays soccer at UP, in UP. And he, like, loves it so much. And he'd be absolutely heartbroken if his team got split up. And he's really good, too, plays goalie. And you should just, you should keep it, yeah. Okay, bye.
I hope the young people realize their words mean a lot to all of us. Anyone else? Okay. You ready to move?
I've been in the UPSC Soccer League since I was six years old. My name is Michael Lopez Gamos. I am nine years old, and I really would not like to split up my team. I've been playing with them for quite some time now, and it would truly just be heartbreaking to me if I were to lose that connection with all of my friends. Most of my friends are currently in this room, and they're supporting me. And I would just really like to keep, to keep the Soccer League, and I would not like for it to be split up.
Thank you. I think he's going to be the next mayor.
I do.
Anyone else? Okay, going once, going twice. Very good. Before we move on, I do want to say we have a lot of business to do, and you're welcome to stay. But you also are welcome, and it won't impact us or make us feel bad if you all just get up and leave and go home and get about your business and homework and your children. That's, that's, we understand. So, please feel free to do that. I have to say, I think I can safely speak on behalf of our council. And a council member was online, council member Denise McCluskey, is that you made a day, seriously, to have citizens come forth to, in a night that is busy, and people, working people, the kids, everything else. It really does mean a lot to every one of us that you've taken the time to come and given us your time, your energy, and your voice. It really does mean a lot. And I assure you, whether we agree, disagree, I don't know what's going to happen, but we will be hearing, we heard you. We'll be listening to debating what was said, and you will hear from us, whether through a study session, which I welcome. You know, you'll know if we have a study session on this or not, but you will know the progression that goes with this decision. So, with that, thank you very much all for being here on this issue. Moving on with the agenda. And, excuse me a second. Okay, so moving on to Agenda Item 6A through 6E, Consent Agenda. I'm calling for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Hearing none, and the motion passes unanimously. And Ms. McCluskey, I know you're online. I didn't hear anything. I don't know if, you know, if you raised your hand, so maybe I'll ask the city clerk to help me, okay, on that. But did you have any objections?
Yeah, I was just shaking my head north and south.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to public hearing and council consideration. We have item number seven, 2026 Property Tax Levy. This is a public hearing to consider and authorize the implementation of the 2026 Property Tax Levy. We will start with staff report, Leslie Blaisdell, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Leslie Blaisdell, Finance Director. Tonight is the public hearing for the property tax increase. This was studied at our last meeting. Per the state statute, the city is authorized to increase its property tax annually up to the lesser of the implicit price deflator, or 1%. To implement this increase for 2026, it is necessary to adopt an ordinance imposing an increase in the regular property tax. As we, this limit results in an increase to our levy of $60,221, which is a 1% increase. We, I shared last week, the increases to assessed values. Those increased 4.2%. We, I shared last week, the increases to assessed values, those increased 4.27%. Based on those figures and the dollar amount of the increase, our 2026 levy would be $7,152,170. And as you know, all of our property tax is dedicated to police and public safety. This would result right now as an estimate, as you know, we will get our final values at the end of December, early January. That would take into account if anyone has appealed or made any changes. But right now, the estimate is that all taxpayers, it would be 95 cents per thousand of assessed value and those within the exemption, the senior citizen exemption, would be 65 cents per 1,000 of assessed value. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Again, this is a public hearing. I will open it up for only clarification, not for discussion of any other thing other than clarify what she may have reported. And then we'll go to public comment and we'll then go for council consideration, which council can debate. So any clarification from council members? Okay. So we'll go to open public hearing and take comments and anybody online?
I don't see anyone online, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone here present from the public that would like to come up and comment regarding the 2026 Property Tax Levy? None appearing to come up. So with that, we'll move on and I'll close the public hearing section and we'll be calling for a motion to consider.
Mayor, I move to pass an ordinance relating to ad valorem property taxes establishing the amounts be raised in 2025, 2026 by taxation on the assessed valuation of property in the city of University Place and setting the levy for the year 2026.
Second. Okay. So at this point, we're for discussion, comments, debate. So any council would like to start? Okay. Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say for the record that number one, Leslie, again, once again, great job on that. And again, to reiterate that, you know, as was pointed out in the public comment section about the importance of maintaining the safety and well-being of our communities, this money goes towards exactly that. So that's it.
Okay. Anyone else? I will make a comment, maybe I might just ask our finance director to maybe state it, she might state it better than I, and that is the percentage of our contract that goes up since this, all the property tax goes to public safety for our police department and other things, but all around public safety is the inflation or the rise in our contract every year versus what we receive and our property tax levy even at this amount of 1%.
Our contract is based on CPI, I believe, and so this, the June to June CPI was 2.7%. So the increases per year vary. It can be 3%, it can be 5%. It just depends on the.
Can you speak up, please?
It can vary year to year. It can be 3%, 5%. And so it always exceeds the increase that we receive in revenues, so.
So in this case, the current one is 2.7.
2.7.
And we're only increasing one. And just, you know, for those that are listening online, I mean, on TV and those that are here, it's really important to understand, we never do catch up with the cost of public safety. As recently, we had a public levy and thank goodness our public, our citizens decided to do that, to pass it. But at some point in the future, 10, 15 years from now, that gap between one and a two and a half or three, or whatever it is, it just gets to be a bigger gap. So it's something that we struggle with all the time. So thank you, Ms. Blaisdell. I don't see any more hands up, so we'll take a vote and Ms., the city clerk, do a vote call, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Boykin?
Yes.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Grassi?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Figueroa?
Aye.
Mayor vote result, five, six ayes. Motion passes.
Our next agenda item is LeMay Franchise Agreement. Again, a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments to LeMay's franchise agreement. We'll start with staff report, Lisa Petorick, Administrative Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Lisa Petorick, Director of Administrative Services. As was discussed at the study session on November 3rd, 2025, staff has for your consideration and for the public hearing, an ordinance to grant Harold LeMay Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Pierce County Refuge, a franchise for refuge and recycling services. The city holds two franchise agreements for refuge and recycling services. One is with University Place Refuge and Recycling and the other is with Harold LeMay Enterprises. For efficiency this evening, they will be referred to as LeMay. Both U P Refuge and LeMay provide similar commercial and residential services across the board. LeMay services a total of 460 residential and commercial customers with over 90% of those customers being residential. The service area for LeMay is in the southeast quadrant of the city, mainly along the Orchard Street West corridor that neighbors Lakewood and Tacoma. There are six main changes to the franchise language that are being proposed. The first is for language that revises the Consumer Price Index adjustment to 100% of the August to August CPIU for Seattle, Tacoma, Bellevue. This latest annual adjustment puts this number at 2.8%. That was the August to August CPIU for that particular area. This translates to the average residential customer that has a 64-gallon container that gets weekly pickup service, that 2.8% cost of living increase translates to around $1.48 in rate change for the month. One thing worth noting is that the franchise language does maintain a cap of 5% of the rate. Let me rephrase that. The franchise rates cannot exceed 5% of the previous year's rates. So there is a 5% rate ceiling cap that is, that remains in the franchise agreement for the protection of the ratepayers. A newly introduced franchise section allows for a senior low-income rate discount of up to 20%. So if a low-income senior is currently receiving a TPU, low-income senior rate, they can call LeMay and ask for a 20% discount on a service of a 35-gallon container, which may include yard waste and recycling as well. So that is new language that has been introduced into this franchise. Another new portion that has been introduced to this franchise is what we're calling a voucher program. This replaces the current seasonal pickups and drop-offs for residents in that customer area. What this would do is this would provide an opportunity for residents in that area to call LeMay four times a year to ask to have refuse or yard waste picked up in addition to their regularly scheduled services. One of the questions that came up at the study session at the last council meeting was whether a bulky item could be provided for. And after further discussion with LeMay management, they have agreed that one of those four voucher opportunities could be used for a large bulky item pickup. So that could be a refrigerator or a large dresser. Staff will continue to work with LeMay to provide some parameters on what that is, but we will largely work towards matching the language of our other franchise in what they pick up. The fourth change to the franchise is to the franchise length itself. This franchise, if it passes via council's approval, would take effect January 1 of next year and would terminate December 31 of 2035. There is a one-time, five-year extension upon mutual agreement between the city and LeMay. Negotiations for negotiating new franchise language closer to the term of that agreement can begin in 2033. And finally, other franchise language updates includes normal housekeeping type of items. There were some updates to RCWs, city codes, so those were cleaned up in the franchise. Additional changes included, we receive our insurance through WCIA, the Washington Cities Insurance Authority. They have some recommendations on increasing certain commercial liability insurance, vehicle liability insurances and so forth. And so those changes were made to bring us up to WCIA's current compliance and recommendations for insurance. So with that, those main changes, staff has negotiated with LeMay a franchise that attempts to balance the market comparator considerations and customer needs while maintaining service customers have grown accustomed to. At this time, staff is recommending council consideration to adopt an ordinance granting a franchise to Harold LeMay Enterprises for refuge and recycling services within their current service area within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move on to the public hearing, any clarification from council members? Okay. So we'll move on to the public hearing. Anyone online?
No one online, Mayor.
Okay. I'll move on to those present here. Anybody here present from the public that would like to come up and provide comments regarding the LeMay Franchise Agreement? Okay, we have one person. Very nice.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Just wanted to take a quick opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Ross Reeksecker. I'm the district manager for LeMay Pierce County Refuge. I think we've had the privilege to serve our small corner, as I like to refer it, for over 20 years. And I urge you to support this so we can, we can have many more years and take care of the great residents here in this city. I'll be here for any questions if needed and now or even in the future if something comes up, I'm always very easy to get ahold of. So get you information if you need it and appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we'll move on and closing the public hearing section and move on to the council consideration. May I have a calling for a motion to consider?
Mayor, I move to pass an ordinance granting a franchise to Harold LeMay Enterprises, Incorporated, doing business as Pierce County Refuge.
Second. Okay. The fun part. Discussion, comments. Okay. Councilmember Grassi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say thank you to Lisa and the team for working on this agreement. Thank you to Ross for being here this evening. It's a pleasure to have you here. And also, I really want to say thank you for adding that bulky item pickup because I know that is a, wasn't in the original draft and I really appreciate that. I think that's a benefit to our residents, to be able to just take your large bulky refrigerator out to the front and call when you need it picked up is a huge benefit. So thank you for that adjustment. Thank you for being here. That's all I have.
Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, Lisa, thank you for a great job. Ross, thank you for being here. I knew your predecessor well and through that relationships with the city. LeMay has always provided a great service and we're just thankful for that. I know in my questioning during the study session, I'd raise the question of are we, for our citizens that receive your services, getting equal treatment to your competitor that services the rest of the city? Looking at that this afternoon, it's the same, so everyone gets equal treatment and for a fair price. So appreciate the work that's gone into those negotiations and I know for those that are paying attention and listening, it is a reasonable and a fair deal. So thank you all for your efforts on that one.
And before I go to Mr. Boykin, Councilmember McCluskey, I think you have.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to ditto the comments with Councilmember Grassi and Councilmember Fleming and also add that I'm excited that LeMay has agreed to create some parity with U P Refuge as well as it will certainly add to helping our city to be, to encourage our residents to clean up their yard in a timely manner. And also I want to thank LeMay for their continued partnership and the good community relations that they've had to date. Thank you.
Councilmember Boykin?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to not just echo those comments, but actually draw the distinction of having an opportunity to have a complimentary service, if you will. I know that staff is going to be absolutely laser-focused on making sure that the services are comfortable so that we can have a great experience in terms of citizens and residents for the city of University Place. But I also believe there is an opportunity to craft something that might just be a unique compliment in ensuring that as LeMay move forward to support us in this fashion. So I'm excited about that. I'm thrilled about that because our staff can do wonderful things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My only comment is, you know, this is a very hard business to be in. And the expectations, the permits, how are you going to get rid of it? Where's it go? The trucks, everything. I just appreciate that we actually have, for a very long time, partners in the community in Pierce County that are willing to partner with us and contract with us to do one of, you know, one of the things that are so essential to every city, every community, and that is, you know, taking out the trash. And so I just appreciate that we can continue this partnership and this business relationship. So with that, I'm going to have the city clerk do the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Boykin?
Yes.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Grassi?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Figueroa?
Aye.
Mayor vote result, six ayes. Motion passes.
Okay. So we'll move on now to, thank you, Ms. Petorick. We'll move on to item number nine, City Manager and Council Comments and Reports, and I'll start with the city manager, Steve Sugg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to bring back a little bit more detail on the annual tree lighting event, holiday tree lighting, Christmas tree lighting on Market Square. Friday, December 5th, it's always the first Friday in December of each year that we light the tree, council lights the tree. It will start with local schools parade of schools, schoolchildren and youth, the choir, the cheer and the drum team coming up one after the other. And they will all precede the fire engine carrying Santa, who will arrive at 5 o'clock. So very exciting. And Santa will be there for, available for photos until, I believe, until about 7:30. So plenty of time for parents and their children to get their photos taken with Santa. During that time, from 5 to 7:30, two and a half hours, we're going to have live music on the square and it's going to be 100% Christmas classics being played by this band. And they played here for us this summer. You may have heard them, United by Music. So they did a great job. They've been rehearsing for quite a while for our special event. And then, of course, at 6:00 PM, no earlier, no later, the council will have a countdown for the tree lighting. So that will be at 6:00 PM, we're going to start that countdown from 10 and so forth. And that will be.
Can you move up to the mic or have the mic move up to you, please?
Yes. So there'll be a countdown at 6:00 PM by the council for the tree, for lighting of the tree. Now, you might wonder, why is the tree lit outside? Well, it's being test lit as we, as they continue to, they've been, they want to make sure that the, by the way, that's the new tree that the council authorized the expenditure of, and so that new tree is in place. And then, excuse me, the event ends at 8:00 PM and hopefully people stick around and enjoy some of the restaurants we have to offer, including our nosed restaurant, Salted Rim, as well as the others. So it should be a great evening, again, Friday, December 5th, with Santa arriving at 5:00 PM. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you. So let's start to the right over here with Councilmember Grassi. You know what? I'm going to change my mind. So I don't forget. I'm going to start with Councilmember McCluskey, who's somewhere in the cloud.
Well, my head's not in the cloud.
No, I know. No, I know.
Let's verify that. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I saw the, our new Christmas tree test lit and looks beautiful. So it'll be spectacular when it's lit on our tree lighting event. I'd like to report on my ZooTrek Authority meeting that I had last Wednesday. We talked about the red wolves and how they are thriving at Point Defiance. The red wolves are actually, they're trying to keep them as wild as possible because they're, they will be reintroduced in South Carolina. And they have a viable program in South Carolina and we're part of the program to encourage the endangered red wolves population. And so we are in the Pacific Northwest, even though it's not their environment, they are thriving here and we are also the largest producers of red wolves for South Carolina. So kudos to our staff at Point Defiance. We talked about the finances and the shortfall that Park Tacoma is having. It has some implication to Trek and Point Defiance Zoo, but it's not that impactful. What is actually hurting Zoo and Trek is the lower attendance. They have lower, about 10% lower attendance during the summer than anticipated. So let's push for a high attendance for zoo lights and get their attendance and their revenues up for the last push in 2025. So they've made some budget adjustments accordingly for 2026. So they're still in the green and the animals will be well taken care of. They have top priorities there. They have the, at the zoo, the Siamese saying, Doodle, little, a bird that has passed away, unfortunately. But they also got a replacement for that animal as well as the Asian small clawed otter. Jarvan has passed away, but a new one is shortly coming to, to take, not his place, but a place at the zoo. They have a new tiger there and there's another one that's coming along the way. They're hoping that they like each other and will have babies at the zoo shortly thereafter if they like each other. So that's a long process and a long socialization procedure that they do for that. The big news is they got a bow mouthed guitar fish transported into the zoo. It has arrived and it's being quarantined right now and they named the guitar fish Fender. How appropriate is that? At the Trek, they, with the Northwest Trek Foundation, they did a large fundraising drive and they were able to buy Trek a new conservation field vehicle that is all electric to replace their old antiquated one that sometimes gets stuck out in the field. And so that's not the best opportunity to get stuck out in the field there with the wild animals. They want, they wanted a vehicle that's a little more reliable to get them back. There's a pine marten that's a new addition to, it's really a cute animal. So look Pine Marten up, Google it. It's really a cute addition to the Trek. They had a event called Hoot and Howl where they invited dogs in their Halloween costumes to come and hoot and howl with the animals at the Trek. And they got over 260 visitors that day and over 100 dogs in their Halloween event. So Northwest Trek and the zoo are doing really, really well. So you just need to go and see, see what they have and bring those attendance numbers up for them. I went to the developers forum last week and it was an amazing, and also I took away a lot of golden nuggets from that forum that I'll, that I'll take back to the council and I'm sure the council will have a discussion and a debriefing on, in regards to that forum. It was well done and I appreciate all the developers that attended and how forthright and they were with their, with their comments and their ideas to help University Place improve with their, with their housing development. I went to an Up for Art meeting and they had a debrief of their November 9 concert, which was well attended. They had well over 60 people in attendance there. They're doing a membership drive. One of the concerns that they had going in is that the wonderful Salted Rim had opened up and it was a little noisy during their concert event. But after reflecting on how that went in partnership with the Salted Rim and Salted Rim closed a door or two for an hour there. And they, they seem that the atrium is still the place for them to do their concerts. They enjoy that it's open and available to the community. It's not a high-end place where you go for sifaneta like in downtown Tacoma or downtown Seattle. It's a hometown, high-end quality concert that is in a active space and they, they're embracing that and they'll continue their efforts to fundraise and establish more events in the atrium. So that was good news for me to hear there. I also had a meeting with Mitel, who is part of the Americans for Arts. It's a national organization and that organization will be at the National League of Cities in Salt Lake this week. They are, their organization is to help and develop art and culture in cities and communities that are interested in doing so. So I had a wonderful conversation with her. She's going to send me some links and information and I'll have meetings throughout 2026 with her as well. So I'm excited about that, especially when we go on to talk about the potential Art and Culture Commission. And Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Grassi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your report as well. Council member McCloskey, we miss having you in person, but we thank you for your report. I want to say, as well, I attended the developers forum and that was well done. Thank you, thank you to staff that put that together. It was, I think, a valuable use of time and great to hear from our housing providers. I look forward to further discussions and action points from that gathering. Our veterans ceremony that our team put together and was emceed by Mayor Protem, Mayor, it was an excellent honor for our community's veterans. I want to thank all of you for attending, the community that came and for the city staff to put that together. No greater honor than to honor our veterans and I think that was in a very appropriate ceremony. I attended the URA Elected Leadership Meeting, which is the Unified Regional Approach to Homelessness. I want to thank our staff, support Jennifer Hales for being a part of that, along with Cory Shear, our Community Outreach Officer, as we explore the idea of linking arms with our fellow jurisdictions in Pierce County around the idea of a unified approach to homelessness and what that looks like in Pierce County, but specifically how it can be a benefit for unhoused in University Place and families and what that means for our city. It's in the early stages of collaboration, but it's an important conversation and I'm thrilled that University Place is finally at the table. Thank you again to Jennifer Hales and Cory for being a part of that effort. I also want to highlight a new business that opened in addition to Salted Rim, which I enjoyed dinner there last week, which was wonderful. H Beauty Lounge opened, cut the ribbon, in our city last week and I had the privilege of being the one person there at H Beauty Lounge. And I just want to highlight this new business in our city. Whenever someone opens a small business, it is an investment of significant dollars and time and blood, sweat and tears. And this team has put together a beautiful operation just off of 27th. It's the only Korean head spa that we have in the city. But in addition, they have put in a lot of work and thought to serve our University Place clients. And I just want to just, another, one more push for us to be present at our ribbon cuttings to just applaud our small businesses because it is no small, easy task to open a small business in this city, in this state, anywhere. They are the backbone of Pierce County and everything that we can do to support them is well intentioned. So I just want to welcome H Beauty Lounge. Thank you to the Salted Rim for opening. Welcome them. Wonderful addition to our city. And so I just want to say that. In closing, I also want to thank and remind everybody too, Small Business Saturday is coming. So as I talk about Small Business Saturday, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, just a wonderful opportunity to support the businesses in our community. We have a new boutique that's opened up across the street, restaurants. We have got to support these people and their investment into our city. And so that Saturday is a wonderful opportunity to do that. And then finally, I do want to say thank you to all of our guests that we had here representing University Place Soccer Club. For those of you to come tonight and have such a large contingency of parents and coaches and kids on such short notice is a testament to all of the work that you do and what it means to this community. I remember the day, the very hard day, that this city had to end recreation, still remember it and what a hard decision that was and painful for so many families and kids and not to be repeated. And so I just thank you for your passion, for what you do for our kids in this community, to hear from those children and the coaches and what that means is priceless. And I know it was a valuable, expensive time and energy and I want to thank you for the emails that we received today, for the phone calls, people passionate about this soccer club. And I just want you to know that we hear you. I want to send a special thanks to Denise Rodelle, who is here representing as a military family. Thank you for her family's service and what it means that we are, you are servicing our community so well, military families, families of all generations. And I just want to thank you for being here tonight. Also, our council member-elect is here this evening as well in chambers. So as in addition to all of us listening, she hears you as well. Thank you, council member-elect Cunningham. So we all hear you and we are listening and I want to thank you for making that a priority this evening. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Fleming?
It's a hard act to follow. No, I will be brief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Both my committees that I am assigned to got canceled since our last meeting, so there's nothing to report either for the Pierce County Regional or SHAPE or the Peugees Sound Regional councils. I too had the privilege of being at the Veterans Day Ceremony, wanted to again thank the city and the UP Veterans Plaza Committee for putting on a very emotional but extremely well-done ceremony. I thought, I thought everyone's participation was outstanding. I also wanted to echo council member Grassi's comments to the individuals, both young and old or older, that came tonight to speak on behalf of the UP Soccer Club. You know, as she pointed out, your voices aren't, they don't fall on deaf ears. We appreciate the passion, appreciate the information, the knowledge, the commitment that you all have to that. And I know, and I can't speak for all council members, but pretty much so, we all heard you. And just thank you for your time being here in the chamber with us tonight. So with that, my comments this evening get to be brief, but thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Mayor Protem Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll start with Housing Development Forum again and it was, and I agree with everyone. I thought it was a very well-done event on the part of the city staff and then the folks who attended. I really appreciate that we had a diversity group, a diverse group there and that we had not just builders and developers, but we had financiers and architects and everybody talking about the issues around developing housing in this community and our neighboring communities as well. And also thanks to City of Lakewood who partnered with us on this event as well. We learned a lot and again, I look forward to what comes out of it. Veterans Day, I will just say that I thought it was a very well-done ceremony and I just would like to thank my council member Fleming and the mayor for their comments that they provided during the event. I thought they were both very well-done this time and it was, not to say that they weren't done well before, but, but I just really, I was, I appreciated your comments. They were, they were moving. Thank you. And then finally, University Place Soccer Club, thank you again for being here tonight. I just want to add just a little personal story. When I was in high school in band, the school board was making cuts and they decided they wanted to cut the band teacher as one of the positions they were going to cut. And a bunch of us got together, we got a petition and we went to a school board meeting and spoke against them firing the band teacher. And I want to say we were, we were successful. And I just really appreciate you bringing not just yourselves here, but your kids so that they can see government in action and how that they have a voice in this world and in this community. And that is so important going forward to the, I mean, I'm going to go big here now, but it's really important to the health of our democracy for people to realize they have a voice. And so I appreciate you coming. I appreciate you bringing your families and thank you.
Thank you. Council member Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me highlight something that has not been shared that I really enjoyed. It was the school tour opportunities that were offered to council members. And so I want to give a thank you to Jeff Chamberlain, our student, our superintendent for University School District, as this is essential to ensure that community gets an opportunity to know what's coming and why it's coming. So that series of tours is going to be a concerted effort to share with the community in just as much of an eager fashion, but just to position that clearly the UP Board of Directors recently passed three resolutions to put on the ballot measure before it's in the special election in February of 2026. And so recognizing what those asks would be and what they would impact in terms of supporting our kids are really quintessential. And so it was really thoughtful to have an opportunity to take a look at where those improvements may go. Also wanted to highlight the NLC, or the National League of Cities, that conference is going to begin later this week. Have the opportunity to represent the city as a delegate and I'm excited about that because every time we get a chance to engage with other leaders around the country who are also invested in the things that we care most about, we can translate that to really powerful experiences for residents and citizens here in the City of University Place. Lastly, I want to echo the excitement. I personally believe you always ought to be excited about something. And for me, it's community engagement where it hits you dearest and it moves you to action. So the exciting thing tonight was, whatever the issue was, having a full representation of what that looks like for people who care very deeply about something. I can tell you, two things were affirmed tonight. Yes, you ought to be excited about something and how it translates. It shows up in how it is that you present yourself. And two, University Place Soccer Club rocks. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Well, talking about a hard act to follow, try six of you, or five of you at least at this point. So I don't have anything to say. It's all been said and we'll move on to our study session. Isn't that nice? Study session, item number 10, 2526 Budget Adjustment. This is to pass an ordinance amending the 2025-2026 biennial budget. And our staff, Leslie Blaisdell, Finance Director, will report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Again, I'm Leslie Blaisdell, Finance Director. Tonight for study session is the 2526 mid-biennial budget adjustment. For the benefit of those watching, as you know, our 2526 budget was adopted in late 2024 and a lot of things can happen over that time before- 2024 and a lot of things can happen over that time before, as we start rolling into 2026. In each year, we do a carry-forward budget adjustment where we can make adjustments for projects that were budgeted in one year and pushed to the next. And then we do a mid-biennial budget adjustment for things that have come up since we adopted the budget. We've had quite a few things come up. There is a public hearing and adoption scheduled for December 1st, so I encourage any citizens to come and speak if they would like to do that at the public hearing. For our changes, it is recommended that many of the changes be funded using the $1.3 million of one-time monies that came out of 2024 that council did not appropriate and elected to leave in the ending fund balance. Consistent with our budget guidelines, all of the items that we're proposing to be funded with these monies are one-time or non-recurring expenses. We always like to use one-time monies for one-time expenses. We don't want to start a program that we have to then figure out how to keep funding in years two, three and beyond. So we had the one-time monies of $1.3 million and these changes use all of that. I have included a chart that shows the various changes, some of which council has discussed throughout the year in the general fund. We are increasing the budget for the RCC peg fees and operations and that is based on the changes to the ILA that council approved on Resolution 1037. We are increasing the budget for credit card fees. More and more people are paying with their credit cards and those fees are going up. And then we have added $246,000 for some economic development and affordable housing work to align with council goals number two and three. In the Police and Public Safety Fund, we have to increase jail costs. After several years during COVID and post-COVID, our jail expenses were way down and this year they are on track to exceed what we currently had budgeted. We're proposing adding $60,000 in 2025 and $50,000 in 2026. We will see a little bit of an increase in court fees. It won't totally offset the increase, but with more jail days, we do see a bit more in court fees that come back to us. Additionally, we are adding the funding for the legal settlement that council approved in September, on September 15th. And then the Swim Fund are just some adjustments to the admin fees paid to the other, to the General Fund and Police Fund based on a lot of these changes. And then we have added the pond sediment and vegetation removal. Both of these projects were included in the breakdown of the surface water management fees and use of those fees. But because it was, these are maintenance projects, they were to be included in the maintenance budget, but somehow inadvertently got missed at budgeting time. They, staff thought it was in the CIP budget. I thought it was in the maintenance budget and it wasn't in. So it is consistent with our breakdown of the use of those fees and the money is there. So just wanted to point that out. In Park CIP, that's where we see the largest change. As you know, we had the opportunity to purchase two pieces of property to add to our park system. One of them has already closed, the Frederick property, and staff has asked to add about $80,000 to the budget for demolition of the house and other security measures because a vacant house is not good. And then we have an additional property purchase that is still in negotiations, but we are putting that money in the budget so that it's there. Both of those are paid for with a combination of our parks impact fees, which this is money that's in the bank and can only be used for parks types expenditures with the remaining being covered by these one-time monies, excess monies that we have in the general fund. In Public Works CIP, we have some adjustments to some projects. The 36th Street Roundabout Project needs about, needed about $50,000 extra to complete that project. We've proposed that to come from the one-time monies. The 35th Street Phase Two, $450,000. We did have appropriated contingency in the CIP fund. We always have a contingency in there just for such a situation if we need it. So we propose utilizing that. 67th Avenue Phase Two needs $200,000. That would come from real estate excise tax. The Leech Creek Sewer, $20,000, also real estate excise tax. And the 57th Street Sewer Project, $300,000. I know you may recall when we were making the final adjustments at the end of last year to the ARPA funding, that was one project that we thought by the end of it, we may need the $300,000. We are putting, because we have the one-time monies, we're putting that in. If we don't have to use it, it'll stay in the general fund, but it would be budgeted should the, should the staff need it for that project completion. In the Fleet Budget, there was a dump truck. As you know, some of these larger trucks, we order them and it takes forever for them to come in and then we have to send them out for their special components. And we had a dump truck that came in last year and it was awaiting a special sander component and staff forgot to carry forward those monies in the, at carry-forward time. So we are including that in this adjustment out of the one-time monies. In IT, there is the Avidex upgrade for council chambers. This was, the contract with Avidex was approved in September. And then lastly, we have increases to our condo association fees for this building. In 2025, we need an additional $40,000. There were some rather large repairs that had to be done to the building that were not expected and weren't in the original budget. It was a sump pump issue and elevator repairs. And then an increase in 2026 of $256,000. The condo association had a reserve study done. Each entity, the city and the library, both participate in the condo association and we have been contributing our share of monies to be set aside for future repairs and reserves. The reserve study that was done determined that we weren't building that reserve as quickly, they weren't building the reserve as quickly as they should and gave us three recommendations to fund it immediately with a big one-time infusion of cash, to spread it over five years or to spread it over 10 years. The board with input from both the city and library decided that one year was just too much, that's too much money for each entity to just throw in right away. They elected to go with the five-year. So this additional 256, about $162,000 of that is additional monies for the next five years that will be contributed to the reserve so that the condo, this building's reserve is fully funded to maintain any upcoming repairs, replacements, things that need to be done to the building. And then on the revenue side, we have a few revenue adjustments. First two, first one is the swim fee. It's an offset to an expense. I am increasing the revenues for the insurance recoveries. As you know, when people run over trees or streetlights, I, as risk manager, go after that, follow up on those to get payment from insurance companies and drivers. And we are increasing that for both 25 and 26. And then in the Swim Fund, they received the NPDES grant of $120,000. That'll be $60,000 in 2025, $60,000 in 2026. And then we are making an adjustment in property management for the Suite 102 rent. When we originally prepared the budget, we were hopeful that Salted Rim would be up and running in 2025, but as you know, permits and things get delayed. So it was pushed to late 2025, so we're reducing that budget. It will be carried out, the length of the lease is the same amount, we've just pushed out the revenues. And then any remaining adjustments or any corresponding transfers between funds related to the changes I've discussed. So if one-time monies is contributing to a project, it's a transfer from the general fund to the, to the CIP fund. Everything comes out of its appropriate fund. Additionally, the adopted budget always includes a salary schedule for the biennium. The 2026 figures that were reviewed and approved by council at budget adoption assumed a 4% COLA for 2026. As you know, the COLA is determined historically by the June to June CPI. So we have included a, an updated salary schedule with those salary bands updated at a 2.7% COLA rather than the 4%, that was in the original document. And HR has added four position titles to support staff advancement. We're not adding bodies or adding positions, they were just adding some position bands to allow for some advancement should it be necessary in the departments. And those were all included in your packet. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor Protem Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. So just a quick question. You mentioned several construction projects that required additional monies like 35th Street and some others. Can you clarify, was that due to cost overruns or those matching funds for grants? Can you, what does come from?
It's some cost overrun. Some of it is quantities increases, increases to the cost of goods. And then Jack can probably speak to it a little better than I can, so I'll let him take the.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Jack Eklund, Director of Public Works. Yeah, so on the, at least the two bigger ones, the 35th and the 67th, the major issue of that had to do with this, with federal-funded projects. The state had changed how they allow us to pay for traffic control. So in the past, we used to be able to do lump sum, bid it as lump sum. So it basically put it on the contractor to identify what their traffic control needs were upfront. They would give us the price upfront and they would have to coordinate their efforts accordingly. And then they, they were held to that unless there was a change that modified it. The state changed where they required now, we could no longer do it with federal funds as a lump sum. It had to be a purely time-material basis. And the challenge with that is in many time-material aspects of a contract, our inspectors can kind of control if you have too many people doing something or if it's not being moved efficiently. The challenge with traffic control, however, if we do anything to say we think you have too many people or you're managing it not as well as we'd like to see, it shifts the liability on the traffic, the contractor's safety from the contractor to the city. So it's not something we really have much ability to do. Unfortunately, depending on the contract or the challenges that occur, there's less incentive for the contractor to be efficient with that, those efforts. So for example, 35th Street, and there were some, I don't want to, you know, just necessarily throw the contractor in a bus, there were some challenges and potentially some unforeseen traffic control concerns out there. But that, that project had a lot of traffic control. In fact, our traffic control increase was in excess of about, of $700,000 for that entire project, which is challenging. Now, we are pushing back on the state. We're trying to change this so that our next projects, we won't be doing this. Now in the 67th.
I have to interrupt because this is about the budget and I don't want to get into a long, you know, description of a project. That's not what, I have to say because we're behind time. So it's your answer?
My question's answered.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
Just taking any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have, Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Leslie, thank you for that report. I always appreciate that immensely, what you do. I do have a couple of questions though. One was you mentioned on the jail cost. You said that that's trending upwards, but specifically, because in the past we've heard the jails kind of quiet, you know, we sometimes use it, sometimes we don't. Now suddenly the cost is going up. What's driving that cost?
The biggest change is the number of days that they're staying in the jail. We are seeing far more length these days. And that's, when I look at the numbers, that is, that is what I'm seeing as the biggest increase.
Is it due to just capacity? And what I mean by that is are there not enough judges to hear those cases or is it their sentences? What's behind that?
That's a very good question. I can certainly work with the county and find out what's behind, what specific reasons are causing that.
Thank you. I, we'd love to hear that, only from the standpoint that I know we negotiate those prices annually and we want to ensure that we're getting our best bang for the buck. You know, if it's delayed because they don't have resources, that's a different conversation versus delayed because they got a sentence to go with that.
Or is it just a really bad guy?
A really bad guy. And we don't want bad guys.
Or a girl.
That's true. Thank you.
You bet.
The other is condo associations. Who runs the condo association?
The condo association, there, there's a contract with a company called Association Management, but the board is made up of city and library. There are three board members. It switches every year. This year it's two representatives from the library, one from the city. Next year it'll be two from the city, one from the library.
And that's because we're the joint owners of this facility, right? And then for the tenants, do they participate in that or do they just pay the fees?
They just pay their rent to us and so they don't get directly billed by the condo association. Their triple nets and things like that are based on what the city has to pay for certain things, aged back and that sort of thing.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Councilmember Grassi?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you again, Leslie. Appreciate your detail and forthright to answer our questions that are forthcoming. So appreciate your work. I just had one question on the new position titles, which are, I understand, aren't new positions. They are just adjusted titles to create room for growth in their additional growth, advancement. And the only thing I had a question, it's senior community outreach officer, code enforcement officer, parks maintenance, what we already have, but the program manager, maybe just a little specific on what programs that they're managing, what department that's under?
That one, I believe, city manager department for doing event, managing the event programs and that sort of thing.
Okay. So that would, okay. That's different than the current title?
That is, that is different than the current title, yes.
Okay. But job description remains the same?
Sorry, the job is expanded.
Expanding.
Yeah, expanded, so.
Same department, though.
So the title reflects the job, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Grassi, are you done?
Oh, thank you. Yes, that's, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Councilmember Boykin?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Director Blaisdell for an excellent report. It's always greatly appreciated. I wanted to just delve into a little bit more of that point that was made by Director Eklund about the change that really attributes to the cost overruns for construction. And that change was, if I'm oversimplifying, please let me know, but that's 100% labor. It's not necessarily that type of labor on that construction, but it's, it's a labor issue. And so it's a labor impact, I should say. So that suggested to me that every time that we have this situation, we're going to be challenged in that same respect because we won't be able to control that. If it's a labor scenario and they are really accounting for it differently, likely in per-hour impact, that's just going to be something that we probably may end up just being a guess at best. And that's disconcerting. So if there's anything that, that comes upstream that you can let us know that we could do to either provide additional comments or provide some insight as to the challenge it puts us in, I'd greatly appreciate that. So thank you so much and thank you, Jack, for sharing that.
Okay, I think we're, we're good on that. So did you, oh, excuse me. Councilmember Murkowski, any, any comments?
Yeah, a lot of my questions were, were answered, Mayor. I echo Councilmember Boykin's concern about when we go into these construction projects and we, we have these uncontrolled costs, we're starting to see a lot of project overruns because of that, which makes me a little nervous. a little nervous. Because we want to protect our, our general fund and contingency. And when these starts to overrun with these grant funded projects because of things that we don't have in our control, it's, it, it makes me nervous. And I don't know really the pathway forward on how to create parameters so that we have a project that we could still pay for. I, I am concerned we may have a project in the future where we may not be able to pay for some of these cost overruns because they're so egregious. Like $700,000 for traffic control on 35th Street sounds a little high. So I don't know what the answer is. But maybe Jack will know someday. I don't know. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Jack, you're on, you're on the hook to fix it. So your, the direction you need, do you have enough to bring us back in ordinance for December the 3rd? I believe it has to be presented, right?
I do. And so that's scheduled for December 1st. There'll be a public hearing.
I do have to, and I do apologize during my comments, I should have asked, and I need to ask now before we move on, because that's the importance of December the 3rd. And that is that if the council wishes to cancel the regular council meeting scheduled for December the 15th, any objections to do on that? I don't see any objections. Denise, Ms. McCuskey? No? So that means that December 3rd, we have to finish business. Okay? So that's the importance.
December 1st or 3rd?
3rd, I'm sorry, 3rd. So.
First.
Oh, 1st. Oh, excuse me. Okay. My bad. So, no, hold on a second. Yes.
You're correct. Thank you.
So you have enough direction now?
I do.
Bring us an ordinance? Okay. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's why they call you the right hand man.
Doing my job.
Okay. Now we're going into item number 11, telecommunications franchises. To consider two franchise applications. One is the Easy, Easy Fiber Texas LLC and Forge Fiber 37 LLC. And our staff is City Attorney Matt Kaser.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Matt Kaser, City Attorney. Before you for study tonight are two telecommunication franchises. In an attempt to try and make up some time tonight, I'll go fairly quickly on these. I think as you can tell from your review of the materials, both of these are substantially similar franchises. They follow a similar model for telecom franchises that the city has used with other telecommunications providers, both of which are 20-year franchises, consisting of an initial 10-year term and then two five-year term renewals for access through these two telecommunication companies to municipal right of ways for telecommunication related purposes. 10, 5, and 5. Just looking at the reaction there. You know, I'm going fast. Like I said, these follow our standard telecommunications franchises. There are a couple of differences just between the two of the franchises in terms of scope and a couple of the minor, not minor, but some of the provisions. The first, probably more significant change, at least textually between the two, relates to the, some of the insurance related provisions in there. Forge Fiber has indicated to us that they are self insured. So we've made appropriate provisions to identify the fact that they're self insured, which is a slight, which is a somewhat deviation from our boilerplate language. The second change relates to the scope and object of what each franchisee seeks to do. Just to kind of back up a step, when you're looking at municipal franchises, similar to the Little May franchise that you passed and considered earlier this evening, a franchise is just simply a fancy name for contract. And it's typically a contract to use municipal right of ways. In the case of Easy Fiber, they have indicated to us that they wish to put in approximately 617,000 linear feet of overhead and underground utilities, facilities, principally underground facilities of fiber optic networks, which is consistent with, at least looking online with other build outs that they've done in other communities. And there's a map included in the packet which reflects that most of the build out appears to belong to many of our arterials and principal right of ways within the city. In the case of Easy Fiber, I'm sorry, sorry, Forge Fiber, they have indicated that they intend to acquire existing right of way in telecommunication assets. We asked them, what are you guys purchasing? Because that's the question that we figure that council might have. And so we got back the following answer when we asked that. And I'll read it verbatim. Here are a description of the assets being purchased. AT&amp;T, through its subsidiary Forge Fiber 37 LLC, is purchasing the F2 fiber from Lumen. F2 is the fiber starting at the first neighborhood fiber cross connect panel and ending at the customer's premises. Lumen will retain the copper cables plus the F1 fiber, and F1 and F2 fibers are all in quotes in what they gave me, which starts at the Lumen Central Office ending at the first neighborhood fiber cross connect panel. The intent is for Forge Fiber 37 LLC franchise agreement to cover all the University Place ROW, because the plan is to extend the system to more customers in the future. They asked if the description is what we need. Maps are not available in terms of assets currently within the right of way. That's what they indicated. They're acquiring assets that are already within the municipal right of way. Like I said, in an effort to make up time, I'm intentionally being fairly short. I'm happy to turn it over to council for additional questions. But the ultimate ask would be to bring back two telecommunication franchises for council consideration at your next meeting. And it would require two separate votes for the two franchises, although I'm presenting it as one tonight.
Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Matt, for that report. I do have, since I have been engaged in this process in the past, the question is, number one, when they are acquiring these assets, how many places in UP are they intending to do the road cuts, if any?
You know, at this point, at least with, and I assume you're talking about forged fiber with the asset acquisition. At this point, they haven't shared the intent to do any road cuts at this point, just simply the asset acquisition. If there's certain road cuts, they have not communicated that to us. However, we can certainly inquire of them and report back to the council.
I know for me, that's important from the standpoint that in the past, and this is in the past, where we allowed franchises in here, they did the road cuts, and then we were kind of left with having to do the patches. And if my memory serves me, and Jack can correct me, we can get, what, five cuts out of a road before it has to be redone in that vicinity, plus or minus. So that's, that's important because then if we're, if they're going to do road cuts, then they've got to be the ones responsible to pay for that.
Right. And the boilerplate franchise generally requires, puts the onus on them to take care of that. But your point is still the sound point.
You know, my, my second question is, on the contract, it's 10, 5, and 5. And these are franchises for cell, not cellular, but for fiber.
Fiber.
So why would we go 10, 5, and 5 versus 5, 5, and 10, since that technology is changing constantly?
I think because the, the technology is changing constantly, I would actually think of it as the 10, 5, and 5. Get your usual biggest bang for your buck at the initial install, and then assess, does that technology still make sense on those five-year intervals?
Okay. If, if these companies are subsequently sold, which they tend to be, does this contract roll over to the new franchisee? Or are those renegotiated?
We would have, either they're renegotiated or council approval for the new company to assume the to be issued franchise, assuming that's where council wishes to go with this. And we've done that before with other franchises.
I would love to see that language. If it's not in there, add it to it again to protect the city. The other question is, is, did they identify how many city owned poles they plan on attaching any devices to?
Neither company has identified any city owned poles to do that. Easy Fiber in their materials has indicated, and let me make sure I have this because it's in the packet materials, that everything would principally be undergrounded.
And they'll have to.
Yeah, but they don't, certainly don't have to if there's already existing above line stuff. We can double check to make sure that there's any other future pole attachments. That has not come up in the course of the discussion, but we'll verify and report back.
And I do know throughout UP, we have a lot of overhead cable that runs through the city. And they're going to be the ones responsible for maintaining that and protecting it, especially in the storms that we have. Okay. Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have.
Mayor Potem Wood?
I'm going to take the honor of asking the dumb question.
There are no dumb questions today.
Okay. So you have two franchisees here. Is this a competition between the two? Or are they both seeking approval to operate in the city simultaneously?
They're, they're both seeking approval. And just so you have a full array of information, we were contacted last week by another telecommunications company just beginning to get the ball started on what's your process for franchises. So these are potential competitors in the market. Having said that, we typically operate on a non-exclusive franchise basis for telecommunication companies so that they would exist with other franchises already in the right of way. You know, common ones that you're already aware of, you know, for example Comcast, the MCI metros, et cetera.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Grassi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A start date?
Start date, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not going to pull it up just because of the time, would generally be effective upon mutual execution.
Okay. So we're.
If I'm wrong, I'll.
It would move pretty fairly quickly then.
Well, typically, council would approve it, you know, assuming that council wishes to approve it on the 1st, it, back and forth for signature. So it could be later this year or even 26.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember, yes, before I forget, I'll come to you, Mr. Boykin.
No worries.
Councilmember McCuskey, before I miss you, do you have any comments?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I, I, as Councilmember Fleming, are, is concerned with the impact of our infrastructure and the road cuts. And also to Mayor Potem's point, is there a limit to how many franchises for these fiber optic companies we can have in our city and aligning into the roadway and the dirt? And, you know, it, it's a finite structure that they're developing into.
Let me answer the second question first, which is, I'm not immediately aware of a limit on that. The, the general presumption, at least in terms of what we're hearing under state law, is if they ask for a franchise and you've had the facilities, you generally have to accommodate that request. And that's not exactly a satisfying answer, but if the space is there, you know, you have to consider that. Your, your first question in terms of, I believe, was limits on curb cuts?
I'm concerned about that. I believe you answered Councilmember Fleming's on that. And so I just want to echo that.
Okay.
So that we're protecting our infrastructure and our, our city poles and that. So that's, you know, if the state, if we have the capacity and the state has mandated that we open the door, then, then we do. I just want to ensure that we're not overlying fiber optics over fiber optics. And it, it seems like that's something that is a finite infrastructure that we're putting it into the dirt or, or overhead. I don't really like the look of all the, the wire nesting of, along the telephone poles that are currently in some parts of our city. And I've been in foreign countries where it's a whole lot worse than that. And so to try, try to avoid that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boykin?
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilmember McCuskey was going where I had intent. I was curious about impacts to infrastructure, really from the standpoint of, it seemed as if we are not discouraging this type of activity because the competition apparently offers a better experience for residents, for citizens in UP. That being the case, I, I would also echo the concern about what, what is too much? And so what will we see in terms of just generally asking you, is there a downside that you're looking for in terms of any of the things that you might bring back to us? Would be a deal breaker of any, of any sort?
None of what you've raised, especially in terms of the numbers, especially for undergrounding, you know, or it's principally undergrounded, I necessarily use a downside. And what you spoke with in terms of enhanced resident experiences is kind of one of the areas where I had kind of landed, whether it's for increased access to residents or our businesses with the increased availability of broadband providers, that you're able to say, you know, you're just not tied into one provider. You've got a choice of providers, which hopefully would create a more competitive environment here within University Place, whether it's residential or commercial.
Okay. Thank you.
For me, just one of the, on the same comment that Fleming had, and that is, the 10, 5, 5, or, you know, 5, 5, 10, is why not 5, 5, 5? Because to me, like has been mentioned, this is a revolving evolution of, of changes, you know, and even for fiber itself, because of the satellites and other technology. So the shorter, the shorter the terms to me is, is, is a better situation for, for any municipality. So can you?
We can, we can certainly ask if they're willing to evaluate at the time. That may impact obviously council consideration. But if council's interested in the timing associated with that, we can certainly go back to each of the providers.
You know, usually you look at long term to make sure that you, you secure that, that service and it doesn't disappear. I don't see any, I don't see where we would not have someone wanting to provide that 15 years from now.
Yeah. The, the challenge is just making sure that if we do this, at least at this juncture, recognizing that it's a something, I don't want to call it a policy shift, but I'm going to call it a policy shift, as we go forward with other franchises.
And that's what I was going to say too. Of course, it would apply to the other ones. So would, in your, in, from your position, does that make better sense? Or?
I, I think it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. You know, I think that, that 10, the 5, and the 5 certainly, it, it, it future proves it to a small, a certain degree. You know, it's the, what is known right now in terms of our ability to protect the right of ways, as opposed to what future legislative action may be coming down the pipeline, there's a pun in there somewhere, associated with our ability to protect the right of ways in the future. So kind of, I'm kind of in a get while the getting's good, at least on.
Yeah, I can see that. I don't know if it can get any worse.
Oh, there's some, there's some prefiled bills left.
Well, you know, I'd like the council, maybe you can present both and let the council decide, you know? I'm not saying that.
There, we can certainly pitch it to them. However, they're going to want certainty. You know, I can tell you right now, both of the providers are going to want some degree of certainty. And they're going to say, this is really what we want. And we're not, but we'll float it with them.
Okay. The other thing is, I know that two of these, or the two of these are to purchase existing facilities, right?
One of them is.
One of them. And not the other ones putting in their own.
It's new. Yeah.
Okay. And the new one that's coming through, putting in their own too?
The Easy, Easy Fiber is putting in new, Forge Fiber is assuming existing.
No, but you said there was another one.
Oh, there's another one. They just made the ask that they're very preliminarily.
Okay.
And we don't even know which one it is. It came in through, if I remember right, it came in through a law firm.
Okay.
And that was like Thursday or Friday of last week.
And there's just fiber infrastructure. They're not dealing with the public. So they're selling their fiber to, whether it be Comcast or whomever, that needs fiber to sell to the consumers, right?
Which one?
Either one of them. I mean, I don't see either one of them.
Easy Fiber, you can go, I, I pulled up Easy Fiber's website and it already, you know, identifies, you know, in areas where you can do the build outs and such. I don't think we're identified on there yet as a spot.
Wow. Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment to Councilmember McCuskey's question. You know, the, the ability facilities to protect their right of ways is a real challenge. And it's been fought for years here in this area by RCC on our behalf. The, the kicker is state has a little bit of authority, not a lot, but this is driven really at the federal level. They're the ones who control all of that stuff. So it's a battle that we should take up with our federal electeds sometimes in terms of our ability to protect our communities.
And RCC is doing a great job on that, by the way.
They have, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. With that, your, your direction for to come back, your.
We'll do some follow up with you. The target would be for the December 1st meeting on some of those, recognizing depending on the answers, that deadline may end up slipping, just depending on where we're at with those.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to item number 12, city commissions, 2026 work plans. And we'll start with the park advisory commission. We have Amy Wolf, our commission chair, I believe she's going to be online. Is that?
No, she's right there.
Oh, she's here. Oh, okay. And Alicia Cunningham, vice chair, are you here?
Mm-hmm.
So who's going to present? So who's going to present? I have Alicia and Amy, so it's just you. Okay. Okay.
Great. I'm going to present our work plan for 2026. Our first priority for 2026 will be assisting the staff with the PROS Plan. That has to be completed every six years.
Can you get the mic closer to you, please?
Closer?
Yeah, much closer. No, much, much, much closer.
Is that better?
A little bit more. I mean, serious, because we, people are trying to listen, and also we've got to get this tape correctly.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Better.
So our first priority will be the PROS Plan, which SCJ Alliance is working on, and will be assisting the staff, giving guidance and recommendations for the updated PROS Plan. Our second priority is Creekside Park Master Plan, so we're assisting the staff and SCJ Alliance, which is working on the master plan, so we're assisting and giving recommendations for Creekside Park Master Plan, and right now they're working on conceptual plans for that, and so we're giving guidance on the conceptual designs that they're doing. Our third priority is Paradise Pond Design, which, a Paradise Pond Park, so there's going to be parking lot and park entryway design that, we'll probably give a little bit of guidance and recommendations on that, but it's not a huge amount. Our fourth project we're assisting with is Cirque Park. So this is, the master park has already been completed, and the master plan's been completed, and so we're going to be just assisting with the grant funding opportunities, or just providing guidance in terms of if there's any funding opportunities for Cirque Park. And our fifth priority, we worked on this last year, and so we may work on this a little bit more this year, is the park facility rental system, so looking into options for that, and Jack gave presentation on the park reservation system and, you know, upgrading it, but it didn't really seem feasible when he talked to us about it, so it's kind of more cost prohibitive, I think, to upgrade to a different type of system, but there may need to be some more research into that for the, for a reservation system. Our sixth project, park project that we are going to work on for 2026, is the UPP Playground, which is on 27th by UP Primary. It's that little peanut-shaped park that has just been sitting there with nothing, and it's just a, like a peanut-shaped sidewalk, and so we're kind of thinking, you know, it's kind of an eyesore, and maybe what can be done there, and options for budget, or who could sponsor, you know, doing some work there to beautify it. The seventh thing we're going to work on is the Youth Sports and Recreation Program, so assisting and giving guidance to the staff for the anticipated sports program, and it looks like maybe we need to, or the staff may need to look at options for soccer, or how that's going to work in with the UP Soccer Club. Last year, we mostly worked on, for 2025, we worked with the Public Safety Commission for safety issues at Kobayashi Park, and provided guidance and assistance for that, and they did install a sign at Kobayashi Park, a police parking sign, to help, you know, kind of divert people from parking for two, or, you know, parking, not parking there so that in case police did need to come down, there would be a space available. And they're also going to start a steward program for Kobayashi, stewards of the park, which, you know, they would, it would just be putting more eyes in the park, so stewards would go to the park and kind of make sure, you know, report any suspicious activity going on at Kobayashi Park, if there happened to be anything going on. So that, we worked on that a lot last year, and a little bit for this year. So, and then also for next year, looking forward to Homestead Park construction finally, hopefully getting started next year, and we also were approached by the Broback family to rename Homestead Park, and so we provided the guidance for that and the letter for approving the renaming of Homestead to Broback, Broback Homestead Park. I think that was pretty much, I think I covered pretty much everything we've worked Were there any questions?
Councilmembers, anyone? Councilmember Grassy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not really a question. I just want to say thank you for your commission work, and for those watching and listening, again, to remind folks that this is 100% volunteer, and I know it's a lot of time for you and investment, so I want to thank you for that. I'm really excited about the stewards of the park, and you're just starting that at Kobayashi only, is that correct?
So, when-
Or looking at it. Tony, sorry.
Tony West, Operations Manager. So the park steward programs, Jennifer Hales and Corse Hears are working on implementing that this winter and spring, so she would probably be able to answer that a little bit better than us.
Okay. And also, I just want to say thank you for that collaboration with Public Safety. I think that's just so important. So thank you for what you do.
Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember McCloskey?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Amy, for your presentation, and kudos to the Park Advisory Commission. They're one of my passions, and, you know, the gems of our city, and, you know, they're in good hands with you guys, with your visioning, and also thank you for being here to hear about the soccer club that is in our community, and to take note, so that when we do bring back recreation, whatever form, form that looks like, we're sensitive to their needs as well, so that we can be a good partner with that existing organization for youth. A couple questions. The Paradise Pond Design, that was just for the parking?
Yeah, it's just parking lot and entry.
Parking lot?
Yeah.
And where?
Yeah, parking lot and entryway design for the Paradise Pond area, and that's all being done by in-house engineering staff with the city.
Okay, all right. And then you mentioned the Cirque Park, you're looking for opportunities for grants. Are we not going to get a adjusted, not total master site plan, but a redesign to the open lot that we have, and some other added amenities to Cirque Park? Are we not going to get that back to council, to look at that?
Yeah, Jack Ecklin again. So that actually came back to council several months ago, so we're not, there wouldn't, it was a report that came from ARC was the group, and so there, at this point, there isn't anything else. That report has been completed, and the, you know, the presentation's been made and accepted, so at this point, there's not an additional thing to be adopted, with the exception that-
Either on the council level for that, because we were talking about pickleball courts and a flowing creek, and-
Yes, so that's what the report we brought to council already earlier this year, so there wasn't additional guidance from council, that there was any additional step after presenting that.
So you don't need an official vote, and you're going to go for grants for those projects?
Yeah, so the, how we, what we identified in the, with that report, they, there was a preferred plan that was part of that report, and then they identified that likely due to the overall cost of it, that it would have to be phased in some sort of way. The phasing itself, although it identified in the report what, there could be some possible phasing, you know, whether it's a sport courts first, or the splash pad, or the water, other water features, or parking restrooms, some of that's going to depend on what the funding opportunity is available. And so now, we did commit to, if, once we identify funding opportunities, that we would come back to council to say, this is what we're looking at doing, and from a strategy standpoint, from that standpoint, but the actual overall plan essentially had, was, you know, part of that, that report that was already brought to council.
Okay, so part of that is coming back to council, then?
Only if we, when we, if we look for a funding or a budget standpoint, if, for the phasing, so forth, yeah.
Okay. So in the sports courts, is there's pickleball courts there?
So what that report-
There's tennis, and was discussed.
Yes. So what was, what was recommended with that is multi-use courts. There's space for essentially three, three multi-use courts that would be either, that could be used as, each one of those three courts could be a single basketball court, a single tennis court, or three pickleball courts. So then, the combination of three could have anything up to maybe nine pickleball, or three basketball, or three tennis, or any combination of what that could be. That was what came, the recommendation from the study from last year.
Okay. And so on the work plan going forward, it's funding that the PAC is going to be looking at, okay?
Yep, funding and recommendations for any kind of phasing associated with that.
Okay, all right. Also glad that the UP Primary Playground is going to get a look see to get that small piece of dirt activated and engaged, or whatever, whatever.
Right.
Go AQS it back to UP Primary.
I, yeah, I asked about that years ago, that little peanut park, and so the thing is, there's, there's, there's not like budget, so, but maybe there is, you know, maybe the UP Historical Society would want to sponsor it. I don't know. So that would be something we would look at, you know, because they do the, they do the garden tour, so. So, yeah, we would need to, you know, figure out what would go there, how do we, how do we pay for it? Or if not, it just stays the way it is.
I'd like to see it functional in some way, in some form.
Right.
Right. And then the stewards program that's going through Jennifer Hales, I'm excited that, that is being looked at, and I, hopefully that program is going to come back to council for the final approval on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Who else has any comments? None? None? Well, busy, a lot of things to do, so we appreciate, every one of us up here appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank you for your time, and everything that, you know, is done on our behalf and on citizens. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
The next commission is the Public Safety Advisory Commission. Emily Calhoun, Commission Chair will be presenting.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. I'm Emily Calhoun. Is that okay? Co-chair of the Public Safety Advisory Commission, happy to be with you tonight to share our 2026 work plan, as well as some of our highlights and successes against our 2025 work plan. I will try to be brief, but first I want to just say we got a lot done this year, and we couldn't have done it without the insights and guidance and regular presence of some key individuals at all of our meetings this year. Thank you to Chief Burke, who always provides up-to-date crime statistics and traffic data, Assistant Chiefs Adams and Dobbs, who deliver comprehensive readouts of West Pierce fires, wins, and challenges, and of course, our Jen Hales, who keeps us organized and on mission and aligned with your leadership. So over the course of this past year, we heard presentations from operational experts in hazard mitigation as it pertains to wildland urban interface and coastal property impacts. We heard about fireworks messaging and response. We heard about state law and legal updates, public safety's role in public park stewardship, homelessness, and traffic safety engineering. We conducted focus groups with community members to share information and gather citizen feedback on issues such as fireworks and traffic safety concerns. We also had a strong presence at community events such as Duck Days, National Night Out, and our regular Coffee with a Cop sessions. During the first half of the year, we did a deep dive into University Place's fireworks policies and messaging with the aim of simplifying messaging to the public to clarify what is and isn't legal, and to determine how aligned our policies are with the interests and the objectives of our community. We heard about enforcement challenges from UPPD, call data from South Sound 911, and fire and damage data from West Pierce Fire. We also listened to community member concerns regarding noise, personal safety, and debris. Ultimately, the commission expressed general support for amending the code just to shorten the cleanup time from 72 hours to an expectation of 24 hours to clean up, but we were unable to reach a consensus on any broader change to policy. It was a useful exercise in that reports remained steady year over year in terms of report and call data. So our work plan for 2026 revolves around addressing public safety concerns and enhancing awareness with the citizens of UP, grounded in education, traffic and pedestrian improvements, increased city commission collaboration, and community engagement. The first item on our work plan is education. We're working to get ahead and stay ahead of any issues that may cause tension or harm to the community, from issues ranging from changes in procedure at the state level pertaining to, for example, convicted child abuser placement or homelessness, to environmental hazards such as storms, fires, and floods. The second item is traffic and pedestrian safety. As I mentioned earlier, we conducted a flash vote earlier this year to identify our community's top concerns, and then last month, we held a focus group discussion with 29 attendees from the public. We broke into several small groups to drill deeper into the issues, to brainstorm potential improvements, and to discuss ways that neighboring communities have implemented solutions. We're going to continue looking into potential improvements and solicit presentations from subject matter experts, and share our findings with the council as they develop. Our third item is continuing to pursue cross-commission collaboration. We've seen measurable improvements at Kobayashi following our joint project with them last year, and we will continue to seek out opportunities to collaborate with any commission when we can identify issues where there's public safety overlap, insofar as the council determines it would be beneficial. Lastly, our fourth work plan item is to continue our trend of community engagement. It's through hearing directly from the community that we can best make our recommendations to the council, so holding public safety forums with the partnership of UPPD and West Pierce Fire and Rescue are critical to receive accurate messaging. We'll also continue to engage with community organizations and facilitate two-way communication between them and you, and of course, we'll continue to support city staff and city council initiatives and messaging regarding all public safety issues. Any questions?
Councilmember Fleming, and then Councilmember Grassy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Emily, I just want to thank you and your commission, fellow commissioners, for truly a job well done. I mean, you hit all the key points. When I look back on this past year of things that the council thought were their hot button items, your commission appears to have responded right on point with that. So thank you so much, and look forward to what you all accomplish in 2026. Great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Grassy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again, Emily, and for your commission members to be here this evening, and thank you for the work that you do. It is no small task, and again, just thank you for your expertise and time that you've dove into this. Just one question, and just for public to know as well, the 29 people at the- Just one question and just for public to know as well, the 29 people at the Traffic Pedestrian Safety Group, how are those people identified or collaborated into that group? Or is there opportunity for the community to be involved and how do we get that message out to them?
Thank you, Councilmember Grassi. We have been keeping a running log via the newsletter requesting community members who have concerns with traffic safety related to reach out. Periodically, over the last year since the 2024 January flash vote, we have asked for citizens to participate in a focus group, and we've been collecting those names. I believe that we have over 60 on the list, and 29 came that night. Chief Burke has been focused on traffic safety, and we will continue to engage the community and invite people to participate in that process.
Okay, so if residents have a concern, a current concern, and they want to be a part of that forum, they can do so through...
Upublicsafety@cityofup.com.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment, Emily. First, really appreciate the break out of what you accomplished last year, that was very helpful, and I really appreciate the work you're doing with forums and engaging the public. That is something that we struggled to do for a long time, and I'm glad you finally broken the code on how to get that done, so thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Boykin?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Emily. I absolutely echo the comments and sentiments that's been shared thus far. Did have one question, though, as it centered around the items of interest. As I was looking at those five, is there anything that jumped out in particular that might suggest a more intentional effort at how you're going to feather out other activity around those items of interest in the future?
Can you elaborate?
Yeah, let me be real specific. I'm looking at the scenario where I see the good bearing of the sexual abuse, and I'm just trying to find out, is that something that's going to be a more focused effort as opposed to cybersecurity, as opposed to hazard mitigation? Just trying to see that these interests, as they have been identified, anything around them that...
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. So the sexual abuse bullet point specifically came out of the recent point of contention with an abuser being placed into the community and the community's response, so that's why we have Matt come to our meetings to help us understand what's going on at the state procedural and legislative level, so that we can understand what changes are coming down the pipe before they get to us, so that we can be prepared to engage with the community if that's necessary.
So these are, these particular interests that have been identified have been either event-driven or something that came out of, what would you say?
I think specifically as it pertains to the commission education bullet point, it's more about just understanding legal updates, state and legal updates.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Okay. Councilmember Grass, I mean, McCloskey, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the Public Safety Advisory Commission for all their hard work and thoughtfulness, and it sounds like there is some proaction taken place to ensure that our community is safer going into 2026 than we were in 2025. I also like the partnership that you have with our Chief Burke and Jennifer Hales, and that strong partnership will make your decisions better and our community safer at the end of the day with good advice coming up to the councils for whatever actions that we need to do. And I concur with Mayor Protim, the public forums are essential to, so that we can keep a footprint on what our citizens are concerned with and where there are areas that we need to focus, i.e. traffic and other things that pop up, especially, you know, keeping our parks safe as well. You know, Kobayashi in particular, because it's a gem, but it's a hidden gem, and so we would like to ensure that people feel safe enough to use our parks at their will. So once again, thank you for your hard work, and I look forward to hearing the outcomes of your work for 2026. And my one question is, are you involved in any of the emergency management conversations and decisions? Because I know you mentioned hazard mitigation and flood, flooding and...
Yeah, I think, so when it comes to keeping an eye on storms and fires and floods, we are doing our best to partner with West Pierce Fire and Rescue, and we will make recommendations as they are needed.
Okay. And do you get reports from West Pierce Fire and Rescue for this coordinated care program?
Yes.
That they have?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good. All right, thank you.
Okay, any last comments from either one of you? You're good?
If I could just briefly make one last remark, not in any official capacity as a commissioner, just as a private citizen and mother of three young kids, I just want to say that I wholeheartedly endorse the message that was delivered here tonight by UPSC.
Okay. So last comments, thank you very much, and seriously, as you well know, we, and that includes the commissioners that presented earlier, thank you for your time, your energy to volunteer, to do all this work and stay in focus and stay in fluid with what needs to get done. We really do thank you very much. Thank you. And with that, I am adjourning this meeting.